Good evening, thank you for joining us. We are waiting for one more council member for quorum. So as soon as we have a council member either in person or online, we will get started. Mr. Snell, what's an appropriate time to wait for another council member to come in?
For this meeting, I'd wait a long time. The answer, the mayor, you need four members of the governing body, not counting yourself. I would, I would at least wait till seven o'clock and I would ask Mr. Rapley or Ms. Tedford to see if they could contact missing council members by phone or text or whatever. Okay?
Okay, sir, thank you. Okay, we have a quorum and we're going to proceed. We're going to call the Castle Hills Special City Council, made in order and determined if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. It is six thirty-seven. We're going to go ahead and forego the invocation and the acknowledgements and we'll proceed to citizen comments. Do we have anybody signed up on non-agenda items? Okay, we will proceed on to item five. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, don't we have a public hearing?
Yes, sir, it's under new business. We're on the consent agenda item first.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir, the consent agenda is five point one. I'll entertain a motion if we have one, counsel.
I also move the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gregory. A second by Mr. May. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. We'll proceed on to item number six, public hearing on an application from Iris Hallbrook, Maverick Land Surveying Company for a replant, which will create two lots from attractive land being one point, I'm sorry, 1.069 acre tract of land establishing lots fourteen A and fourteen B, Block County Block five seven seven eight Castle Hills subdivision Castle Hills, Texas, as recorded in volume nine eight zero, page three nine three of the deed and bear plat record of Bear County. It is six thirty-nine and we're going to open the public hearing. I believe, Mr. Heyren. Sure, okay, do we have anybody else signed up for the public hearing?
Yes, sir, we have a statement from Mr. And Mrs. Ackley. They'd like read to the record to city council. Would you like me to read it?
Mr. Snell, is it appropriate to read it or should we just cite that as record and its position, which is opposition?
I think it's important for the, the citizen apparently requested be read. I think we should have Ms. Tedford read it into the record.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rapley, can you turn up Mr. Snell's volume, please? Ms. Tedford, please.
To city council, I am Stephen Ackley, one one eight West Castle Lane, co-owner with my wife, Dr. Jaclyn Ackley, of an abiding property to the subject of this application to create two plots from the existing tract at two zero eight Southwest St. Lane. Due to previous travel commitments made before notice of this hearing was delivered, I am unable to attend the hearing and I appreciate you receiving this commentary. First of all, I wish to, I wish to object to the very short notice that we and the entire mailing list received of this hearing. We only received it on Friday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, after city closing hours. So essentially, three business days prior to the day of the hearing. As well as the letter itself with the legal notification, only gave the legal description of the tract with no indication of street address. This required a search of BCAD, the BCAD site. The site it searched in and it could be characterized as the user vicious, in my opinion, to find the property in question, where it is located and the information that it abuts our property. One of our neighbors called me later that evening, having undergone the same type of search, but he had mistakenly identified a different property, which we were able to rectify with both of us at our computers on the website. A simple additional note within the letter of the street address accompanying this letter is recommended for, for the future to avoid this confusion. When it became clear that I had to see the site plan, I visited Mr. Rapley on Monday morning and inquired about the short notice. He explained that the notice, to best of his knowledge, was mailed ten business days prior to the hearing, as it is legally required. He will make inquiries of, inquiries of the US Postal Service as to why it took so long. He also kindly provided copies of the agenda and site plan that are the basis of my comments. When I first saw the size of the tract, one point zero six nine acres, I was puzzled about, puzzled about how this, this lot of this size could be subdivided and still fulfill the requirements of less than zero point five acre each of unencumbered land for that onsite septic system that, that are needed in this neighborhood with no sewer system. But through the marvels of the computer-aided design CAD, Maverick Land Surveying has come up with what I would characterize as a real estate origami and submitted site plan. From a four-sided rectangular track, two lots with respectively seven sides, seven sides, Lot fourteen A and eight sides, Lot fourteen B. With this technically, this, while this technically may satisfy the legal requirements for size on paper, it is extremely poor example of how to subdivide a property with the properties appearing like two interlocking jigsaw puzzle pieces. That said, I wish the council, the city council will be aware of the following, in my view, that should be addressed before approval. One, the lot, the land is divided in such a way that the existing residents will remain on Lot fourteen A. A question, however, is, the question is, does the existing septic tank for that residence lie within the new boundaries with setbacks from the Lot fourteen B? Why are the two concrete structures in the back of the residence currently used for and are they inside the property line for Lot fourteen B? Three, the boundaries for fourteen, for Lot fourteen B include the flagpole driveway with street access for this back lot. Since the residents on fourteen A will remain, however, it appears the detached garage slash shed is on that driveway. So is the plan to tear down the garage to provide access to Lot fourteen B? Number four, is the plan also to use the flagpole driveway for access to both the lots fourteen A and fourteen B? Is this appropriate and/or legal? Number five, the easement area for water communications is called a shared easement, but is totally within the boundary of Lot fourteen A dash line on the site plan. It ends, however, so that the utility lines to fourteen B would run beside their driveway for the last portion. Should this portion be designated as easement on the fourteen B property? Since acreage qualifying for onsite septic in Lot fourteen B is only point five zero one acre. If easement is needed for this portion, it is, it is a crucial engineering question to answer, in my opinion. Number six, is the distance from the existing residence to, on fourteen A to the flagpole driveway property line of fourteen B at the required side setback distance? I therefore request that the plat application be deferred until the property owners and submitting engineers provide answers to these questions that are reviewed and approved by the city engineer as conforming to the requirements to approve the replating. Thank you for your attention, Stephen Ackley, one eighteen West Castle Lane.
Thank you, Ms. Tedford. If there's no further comments for the public hearing, we will close the public hearing at six forty-five and proceed to item six point two. Discussion possible action on the application from Ibis Hallbrook Maverick Land Surveying Company for a replant, which will create two lots from attractive land being a one point zero six nine acre tract of land establishing lots fourteen A and fourteen B, Block County Block five seven seven eight Castle Hills subdivision Castle Hills, Texas, as recorded in volume nine eight zero, page three nine three of deed and plat record of Bear County. Possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven one consultation with attorney. Do we have a presentation?
Do we have a city engineer on line? Is that the engineer?
No, the applicant.
Good evening, my name is Jake Oder with Maverick Land Surveying Company. My business is here in Castle Hills and I've been working with Dana Holbrook and the Holbrook family on this plat for quite a while. We have gone through all the utility companies, we've gone through Bear County and got approval for the, for the onsite septic for both lots through Bear County. All those are attached, letters certifications are attached to this plat. There are some minor issues that we're working with through the, the city engineer right now, you know, for some, you know, non-conforming issues with the garage. But we're confident all these issues, you know, will be quickly resolved. The plat, in our opinion, I mean, the lot lines, although, you know, the objection was that it is kind of a jigsaw puzzle, but, but they're all conformed. The setbacks, all the buildings are within the, 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 the setback requirements. The easements are in place or will be in place with the plat. And the minimum lot sizes is also addressed on the plat and achieved. So, if there's any questions?
Mr. May?
I have a question.
Sure.
The, is it your intent for both of these to be residential, separate residences?
They have to be. There are residential. So the, the Holbrook family, this is their, this is their property and this is for their estate. They plan to build a house and for what I believe the daughter take the, the front part and they're build their house, retirement house in the back. So this is, you know, for their, for their family. Dana Holbrook is also a resident of Castle Hills currently.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gregory?
Have any of the concerns read today by Dr. Ackley been looked at and/or addressed?
Yes, a lot of those were in the, in the, in the city engineer's comments that we were working through. And all of them, you know, all the non-conforming issues mainly pertaining to the, to the garage. There's a garage that has a carport attached to one side that, that was, that will be within the setbacks. But part of that structure is going to be demoed, leaving only the garage and the garage will be within and conformed to the setback requirements there and not within the driveway, going back to the, the flag lot portion. Flag lots just have to be a minimum of ten feet wide. We have close to twenty at its narrowest point. So there's, there's no issue there with fire or, or any access to the back lot there.
Mr. Paul?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you, looking at this, so the split in half, basically, the house will be, the second one will be behind the current house. And you'll have a flag drive on the left-hand side, so it'll be a flag lot, is what you're saying?
Yes.
And, and you say that the drive would be twenty feet as opposed to ten?
Well, no.
I couldn't hear you very good with that mask.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so, so the minimum width required is, is a flag lot, but the width of it has to be ten foot. You know, the driveway can be less, but the minimum width of the flag itself, the property itself is ten. But we have well, we have almost close to twenty at its narrowest point. So there, there shouldn't be any issue there with the, the width of the flag portion.
Thank you.
Mr. Heyren, did you want to make any comments before we hear from the city engineer? Okay, Mr. Gregory?
Are these homes going to be one or two stories?
That's a good question. I mean, the, the front, the front lot, the house is already there and will remain. And it's a one-story house, I believe. Yeah, as far as I know, I don't think the Holbrooks have a, a, a plan now for the, the house. This is something that's going to come later in their, in their estate. But they want to go ahead and take care of it now while they can. So I'm not certain. Is there an idea?
Because that's important. There is a minimum size for a house on a lot. And I'm just curious, if it is even possible after you subdivide this, can the minimum size of a house that can be put on a lot be put there according to our statutes?
Yes, this, this lot will accommodate, you know, the minimum size up to, you know, we've got, we just planned a three thousand square foot house on there and, and, you know, there's plenty of room within this area to do, to do that. So, yes, it, it will conform. Unless, you know, in the future, there's some other code that goes into place, but as it stands currently.
Thank you. If you give us a second, we're going to hear from the city engineer real quick. Mr. Aratano?
Yes. We reviewed the, the plat, the whole book, broke plat at two eight South Winston. And we had made a number of comments, sent those to the city engineer, both on the plat and their stormwater management plan, which is addressed, addresses the drainage issues. We received back a revised plat, but we have yet to receive a revised stormwater management plan. Based on those two things, there's two issues that we still feel need to be addressed fully. Is that, one is with the existing detached garage that encroaches in the side and rear setbacks as required by sections fifty dash six four B and C. Unless that garage is removed, then the setbacks are, are being violated. The second thing, section forty dash seventy-one C seven requires that we have no objection to the plans for their drainage plan. Since they did not address any of our comments and provide an updated drainage plan, then we object to their plan at this time. Therefore, we recommend that the, the replat be denied at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Heyren, did you have any comments at this time? If you want to come up to the microphone, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Evan Haberman, two ten South Winston Lane. I'm not crazy about the lot vision, but I realize it's legal to do this. And I believe that the septic system that was asked about, that it's there, but I think it currently, it's sprayed in the area on the B, so they just have to reroute the lines, I guess. And and I just, let's see, how do I say that? I don't, I don't know what my rights are in this either, though.
You see, you have three minutes and you can-
Well, I mean, my, my legal rights and, you know, I, I really can't object to the division of the lot.
So right now, you have three minutes and you can ask questions and those are things that can-
Well, that's what I'm asking is, what, what, what legal protections do I have?
I, I can't answer that for you right now. I can see if Mr. Snell can give us any information.
Okay, well, I, I realize that they, they can pretty much do what they want to at some point, but and the, the other question is about the easement. I don't know if that's a issue or not with the electricity. Because on our lot too, we have a post halfway to the house before it gets there, because it's such a long lot. I'm next door, two ten. That, that's, I guess that's all I really have to say at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Paul?
Before Mr. Isbrand, could, could I clarify one thing again? I'm assuming that we're here just to re-address the lines on the property. That the law says that fourteen thousand square feet minimum. And that's all we're doing is redrawing lines. We aren't addressing any of the other issues about building and things of that nature that would come at future date. Is that not correct, Mr. Snell?
Not exactly, sir. The, the role of the governing body in considering a replat or a plat is to make certain that the proposed document complies with state law and local ordinances as to subdividing real estate. You are correct that there are certain things which don't, are, are not addressed at the plating stage and that our attack direct are, are addressed at the building permit stage. But the items that Mr. Aratana, Ar, Artoranos, and I'm sorry about your name, Joe, presented earlier are directly related to the plat. The engineer looks at the plat to see if it, or a replat in this case, to see if it complies with the rules in the subdivision ordinance and other applicable city ordinances. He's pointed out to the governing body that there is a issue regarding setback in that an existing structure is in what would ordinarily be the setback. He's also identified that the subdivision ordinance calls for the city engineer to specifically say whether or not he has an objection to the water, the stormwater drainage property, situation on the property. And there may be other areas where the proposed replat falls a little short of other city ordinance requirements or other law that applies to the property.
Okay, well, that answers, because basically, can the lines be appropriately redrawn and considered under the current situations that are, the engineer has said, and that's what I'm saying. So I agree, the engineer has, at this point, red does not recommend that this be replatted, if I heard him correct.
His recommendation that the existing document you're looking at tonight be denied acceptance pending resolution of the specific issues identified.
Thank you.
Mr. Rapley?
Mayor, I just want to let you know, you have a copy of Mr. Aratano's letter that outlines the specifics. I did pass out a copy of, of the proposed site plan, which Mr. Aratano provided Maverick as far as the items to address. So just trying to give you the proposed site plan with, related to his comments as our city engineer. But specifically, you have the letter that outlines his concerns as city engineer for, for the denial.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Do we have any motions, counsel?
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Of course.
Procedurally, is, is this a process where we would direct them to go back to address these and then bring it back, or is a process of denial or approval at this point, well, in the case of denial? And then for a re-application for a replat?
It's my understanding, in the case of a denial, they'll have fifteen days to address the issues and come back to-
Well, they, they'll have to address it and then when they refile it, we have fifteen days to get it back in front of y'all as a governing body to make sure they've done their due diligence and satisfied our statutes and codes related to the city engineer's review.
So asking them to address those outstanding issues necessitates us adopting a resolution to deny tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, and Mr. Snell could probably elaborate as well.
Mr. Snell, yes, sir?
The, the, because of the new statute that became effective on September one, two thousand nineteen, Mr. Isbrand is correct that the, the, the way to do a denial is to pass a resolution denying the replat, but that resolution must include specific reasons for denial and each reason must be attacked, must, thus be identified by what statute or ordinance is the, the basis for the denial. In order for the denial to stick under the amendments to the plating or the plating statute in chapter two twelve of the Local Government Code. I believe Mr. Rapley has a form of such a resolution for council's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Snell. Does that answer your questions?
Just one other, and is it necessary to read into the record each of those or does a written document- or does a written document suffice as the resolution?
A, 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 a motion to adopt resolution number whatever, maybe just resolution number and the caption to the resolution would be adequate. And then a copy of the resolution should be provided to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. With, with that said, mayor, I would move adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh four dash two two, resolution denying replat of the property located at and commonly known as two oh eight South Winston Lane and being legally described as part of Lot fourteen, Block four, County Block five, seven seven eight Castle Hills subdivision for the specified reasons in the resolution.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. We have a second by Mr. Gregory. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, a motion passes unanimously. Do we have any announcements by anybody up here? I can't imagine that we do. We just saw each other recently. And that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. You, you want to stick around? A second by Mr. Isbrand. All in favor? Unanimous. It is seven to three. Meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.